So our first, welcome everyone. Unfortunately, Dr. Connolly had a conflict this evening, so he's not here, but he will be here next Tuesday at our workshop. So on the count, first agenda item is the calendar. I would just appoint people's attention to the superintendent public forums, which are always a good opportunity for parents and residents, if they're interested, to hear from the superintendent, ask their questions. And there are also superintendent budget forums that are posted before, both of which will occur before our budget vote, on the 30th, March 30th, and April 6th, both at Town Hall. Any, oh my goodness, right, it didn't all fit on one page. Okay, so busy spring. That was all the schools events. Those were our meetings, the superintendent public forums, and the budget forums. And these are the community events. Any additions to the calendar? Ms. Scotto?
This isn't, excuse me, this isn't an addition, but I want to point out to you that the Brookline Education Foundation 35th Anniversary Gala is coming up on April 2nd. This is a gala that's held only once every five years, or has been in recent years. And I would like to suggest and encourage that everyone go. As of Monday night, two-thirds of the tickets had already been sold. And if you want to go, you need to buy your tickets, and we hope all of you will show up.
Thank you. Ms. Charlebsky?
I would also like to make, in addition to the Education Foundation event, the Bob Spurber event that all of you got on email. If you click on the email on the bottom, the website, it then takes you to the place where to register. And you can register just to come, it's free, or you can give a donation if somebody would like. But we'd like to know how many people are going to be coming, so it'd be great if people could respond. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Stone?
I just wanted to mention that Dr. Connolly invited me to join him at as many of the superintendent forums as I could, so that we could together address questions on negotiations from parents who came to those forums. And I will be happy to do so. I can't make every single one of them, but I just wanted to let people know, as they looked at those superintendent forums, that they were also an opportunity to ask questions.
All right. There are no further items. Then the next order of business is our consent agenda. It's an out-of-state field trip for the Baker School eighth graders to New York. Is there a motion? Ms. Scotto, second. Ms. Stone? Sure?
I know many of you have seen some of the emails that we've gotten recently from a number of concerned parents suggesting that they are hearing from their children, perhaps from their children's teachers, that some of the eighth grade trips might be compromised if teachers are not willing to chaperone. And I wondered whether, I'm sorry that Dr. Connolly isn't here, because this is really a question for him, but I was curious about whether or not we have, I would like anyway to ask Dr. Connolly, please, on our behalf, to speak with principals about this. Typically, those trips are supervised by principal and vice principal, and then teachers and parents fill in as extra chaperones. I just would like to hear about whatever reassurance is being given to those students and classrooms about those trips going forward, even if there is a, I'd just like to hear from the schools about what's happening on that.
As a matter of fact, there was a survey monkey that went out at the Forunkel School, and one of the choices is obviously having the trip, but having parents as chaperones, as it was a survey, so, or alternatively, cancel the trip, so.
So I know there are discussions going on about it, but maybe we can wait till Dr. Connolly comes back to answer your question. Okay, good. One thing I forgot to do, which I'm gonna do in the middle of a motion, but hopefully you'll forgive me, is one of our school committee members is in, where are you? Atlanta? Beth's on mute, I think.
Yeah, yeah, Beth is in Atlanta.
So we just need to go through the remote participation guidelines. Since Beth is in Atlanta, and we have a majority quorum in the room, and we have a phone and a room, and you have all our documents, and if you can't hear us, let us know. And all votes will be roll call vote, and if there are technical difficulties, we'll suspend discussion or disconnect you. Okay? All right. So we're in the middle of a vote. We have a vote, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor? Dr. Jackson? Oh, sorry, the eighth grade graduation, the Baker eighth grade graduation.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Scotto? Ms. Charlebsky? We're voting on the eighth grade graduation.
Don't we just all vote together?
No, we have to roll call vote, because Beth is on--
Oh, yes, sorry.
I'm not even listening. Mr. Chang? Ms. Ram?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. That took far longer than expected. So the next order of business is our update on the superintendent transition process. Dr. Jackson, there should be slides that are going to be queued up by Rob, I emailed them to Robin. I'm not sure where they are now. They're somewhere. Oh, she'll pull them up. Stand where you're like, I don't know if there's a remote. No. Oh, you might need to go up there, then, because there's no remote.
I'm fixing a sprained ankle. Hi, everyone. I feel like I just walked in, and I should say hello. So tonight, what I'd like to do is take everyone through the process soup to nuts, to remind everyone what we've done, and then bring everybody up to speed with where we are, and take it from there. So I will go through that. So you might recall, back in November, it now was, we began a process to identify a new superintendent after the former superintendent left the district. And in the process of developing what that process was gonna be, we started off simply by trying to agree on some basic principles to help us get through the process in a way that we thought would both get us to an outstanding leader, but also fully engage the community and draw on the expertise of people who could help us make the decision. So you'll see these search process principles that we came to agreement on as a committee early on. So the focus, of course, being to hire an outstanding educational leader that would guide all of our decision-making processes. Transparency, sharing and communicating expectations, so staff and the community know what's happening. Efficiency, we had a very specific goal of hitting the spring as a decision point. We were trying to avoid having dear Dr. Connolly have to continue on his interim, not because we didn't want him, but we thought he might wanna do something else. And also engagement, really making sure that we were involving multiple stakeholders to get input and feedback. So this is gonna walk us through, basically, month to month, what the primary activities were that we engaged in throughout the process. It brings us to today. So in November, we launched a request for proposal process to identify and select a search firm for the superintendent search. One of the things that we got asked early on was, well, why do a search firm? Why not just, you know, look around Massachusetts? And/or use your collective knowledge on the school committee, was one of the questions I received. And we were very explicit about our desire for a search firm in order to attain a pool of candidates for the search that were not only highly qualified, but that came from across the country to bring a diversity of ideas, as well as a diversity of experiences, and frankly, to generate a pool that was diverse in terms of ethnicity and race, as well as gender and experience. And so that was the reason we decided to secure a search firm. And we developed a search firm selection committee that you can see there, of Barbara Scotto, Rebecca Stone, myself, and Helen Charlebsky, to review proposals that came in by way of the request for proposals process. We selected, upon recommendation, Atlantic Research Partners, who some of you have gotten to know pretty well. Jim Hugie and Laura Hugie are their representatives. And with them, right after that, we started the process of developing timeline, milestones, how are we gonna do this? What was it gonna take from month to month? And they initially met with us to figure out a posting, so that while we were developing the process, we could start to advertise and talk to people about the position amongst our networks and their networks, and then be ready to post. Just so folks understand the role of Atlantic Research Partners, because sometimes people will say to me, the search firm picked the candidates. No, the search firm worked with the school committee to develop a process to identify candidates, and to help us develop a process to get stakeholder engagement. So some of you may have met the Hugies at various focus groups and community sessions, and they were the ones who were helping us to make that happen. They also helped us distill all of that information in order to determine what our leadership profile was going to be, so that once we got candidates, we knew how to determine whether or not they were the ones we wanted, based on the things that we identified as important to the town. It was their job to deliver diverse national candidate pool, and to present semifinalists, and to conduct background checks, and do all of the research on the candidates that we were going to consider, including reference checks. So in December, we posted the position publicly on December 3rd, and we started formal national recruitment at conferences and across our networks on December 7th. And then we started the process of getting input. So while we were recruiting, we were also getting input from across Brookline around, okay, so what is it we're looking for in this candidate? And Atlantic Research Partners held 39 focus groups and forums over the months of December and January, which included 16 focus groups with community partners and town agencies, 18 focus groups with school and district staff, and then five open public community forums, where we also had language translation available to people who participated. And that handy-dandy pie chart just shows you the distribution. And then here, for the sake of, once this gets posted, people can see, and in fact, this is already on the website, but these are the community partners and town agencies with which we did focus groups, and then came back to later in the process, as we brought forth candidates for finalists, and then the school district staff focus groups that we conducted as well, and all the different folks who were involved in that. So fast forward to January. After having done all of the focus groups and the community forums, Atlantic Research Partners developed a profile, which we then were ready to use, once we actually got our candidate, our applicants, which came as of January 15th. That was the deadline. We did extend it, looking at Ben Mamas, I think, by a week or a few days, because we wanted to make sure that we got a nice full pool, and we ended up netting 29 applications in January. These are the demographics of the 29 applicants in the full pool. Some of this has already been reported out, but happy to review it here. So we had, and these are whole numbers, these are not percentages, so of the candidates, 19 were white, eight were African-American, one was Asian, and one was Latino-Latina. We had 17 female males apply, and 12 females apply. Or men and women. When you look at the education breakdown of the candidates, the majority had a PhD and/or EDD and/or a master's degree, so some level of advanced degree. There were a small number, three, who had either an education specialist degree or other. We actually had a JD mixed in the bunch. Geographic location of applicants, you can see there, the majority were from Massachusetts, so we were able to attain our goal of getting a national representation, both drawing from some southern states, western states, midwestern states, and some other eastern states. So February was when we then turned our attention to looking at this pool, and trying to get ourselves down below, to us as a finalist. The chair of the school committee appointed a superintendent search subcommittee, whose job it was to consider applicants and to distill to our finalist pool. That group was myself, Ben Chang, Helen Charlebsky, and Chairman Dickoff. And there's reference to our backgrounds, in case you're curious. Fifty percent of us consider ourselves people of color, non-native English speakers, majority female, all of us have some sort of advanced degree, and we all live in Brookline. And that group, then, basically, is the group that brought four, three finalists, to the school committee, to then consider, and at the end of the day, were selected as finalists, those being Andrew Bott, John Sills, and Bernard Taylor. So now we have our candidates. So now we're back to almost full circle, to where we were back in December, because we then needed to pull the community and stakeholders into the process, saying, okay, well, now, how do we choose? We had three really strong candidates, each of whom brought a variety of experiences to the table, that we thought would address what we put in the leadership profile, in terms of both the experience that they brought to the table, but also their perspectives on education and education leadership, which we were very interested in. So we created a finalist review committee, and also counted very heavily on the public to inform the school committee's choice. And so we, so people have asked, or what was the difference between the finalist review committee and the public input? The finalist review committee, folks, were actually pulled from and invited from that first group of focus groups and community group partners that we worked with. We went back to them, and we said, we would like you to participate, as well as teachers and principals and school committee members, to be the group responsible for not just going to the interviews that, you know, you can go to, but to review all of the materials we have, so applications, using the leadership profile, and then attending at least interview activities for at least two candidates, because in addition to getting their feedback on single candidates, we wanted some comparison. And so their requirement was to provide us with feedback. They gave us a chance to see, if you were to compare across all these candidates, how would you rate their strengths and challenges and whatnot relative to the leadership profile? And then they had to submit that back to us, all of which was done online. The public was also invited to participate and give feedback, and to inform our process as well, and they did so online as well. Candidates were interviewed, as many of you know, because you were a part of it, the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, I may never forget those dates of February, in all-day activities that included visits to schools, interviews with finalist review committee, with teachers, with staff, and it culminated each day in a very, in a public, open interview. These are the folks who were, who identified themselves and volunteered to be on the finalist review committee, and who submitted online survey feedback. And it couldn't fit on one slide, so. We ended up with 45 members in total, 40 of whom provided not just individual surveys, but also comparison surveys, and we ended up with about 166 public surveys submitted. Getting closer to where we are today, after receiving that, the school committee met March 3rd to go through that feedback, and to understand and to discuss for each candidate relative to the profile. We also drew upon the rubric that's used to assess superintendents in the state of Massachusetts, and the job description, to sort of start to say, okay, if you look across these candidates, and you look at the feedback we've received, how do we think about their strengths and their challenges? And so we did that during a meeting. And during that meeting, we also came to the conclusion that there were two out of the three that we wanted to pursue further, and to reach out and conduct further reference checks and get to know better, and that was John Sills and Andrew Bott. We also then, at that meeting, did a non-binding straw poll vote, which was simply to identify people's preferences at the moment, understanding that we still had some work to do to learn more about the candidates. And the vote was that six of us on the school committee preferred Andrew Bott as a candidate, one preferred John Sills, and two were not yet ready to declare a preference. So once we had done that, we then proceeded to get some more information about John Sills and Andrew Bott. We had already had our search firm conduct their standard investigation background checks. We had reached out and did some references. In the process, we learned about personnel, a personnel matter that Andrew Bott was involved with in Boston, and so we investigated that, to make sure that we were satisfied that that was resolved well, which it was. So that was the time in between that we took to really dig more deeply. We spoke to references in Bedford for John Sills, et cetera. And when it came down to it, and I'm gonna defer to the chair a little bit here, if--
Good.
Should I keep going, in terms of what that conversation was, in terms of our? So the exciting part for us was that we had two really strong candidates, both of whom brought what we saw as critical experience to our district, coming from different places. One had been a superintendent, had also been a principal, was currently a superintendent, had done a lot of work, and was committed to issues related to equity and education, was well-loved and respected in the community in which he worked, was a strong communicator. And the other was also those things. But that perspective came from a community that experienced him as a principal, and as a leader in a turnaround school in Boston, also as a leader, as a coach to other principals, and as someone at the Lincoln School, who had very quickly improved the culture at the Lincoln School, and someone who people were very pleased with in terms of his performance. So we got to that place of saying, well, aren't we lucky? We have two incredibly strong candidates, and we could pick either one of them, and feel like we've done a great job for Brookline? But you only get to pick one. And so as we started to then discern what stood out, we got to a place where you saw the preferred vote, and some of the comments amongst the school committee around what stood out for Andrew Bott in particular, particularly given that he had not been a superintendent. And we knew very clearly that that was something that, you know, we were like, well, okay, so he's not been a superintendent, he's been a principal, and he's not familiar with the high school. For John Sills, we were concerned that he wasn't as concerned with the elementary school, even though he had been a superintendent, and was gonna need to learn some other things about Brookline in order to be effective here. But when we looked at Andrew Bott in particular, we were very impressed with him as a visionary educational leader, and as a real problem solver. And he had solved problems in difficult places and ways that we thought, given some of the challenges that we face in Brookline, he would bring an approach to problem solving that would be innovative and creative, and as many people who we got feedback from would say, take us to that next place we wanna go, in terms of educational vision. He had a reputation as an effective communicator, culture builder, relationship builder, within a building and among schools and community institutions, his experience as a coach and a mentor to other principals, and given where we are with hiring principals, and needing to really beef up how much we provide principals support, we thought that was critically important. Unlike John Sills, Andrew Bott has had documented success in hiring and retaining high-quality staff, specifically staff of color. And he's actually used some very creative ways to do that, drawing on different organizations and entities in the Boston area and elsewhere, to bring on staff of color and to retain them. He's a supportive leader, who holds people accountable, visionary instructional leader. And then, you know, we looked at the gaps in experience, including lack of system-wide administrative experience, as I said. But rapid mastery of complex problems was a particular strength across various schools and community settings. Sorry, pushed the wrong button. So that's the end of the formal presentation that I have. I wanna turn it back over to the chair, I think, at this point.
Good. And the only other piece of information to add to that is that, as the committee members know, subsequent to March 3rd, we did receive notice from Mr. Sills that he was going to withdraw his candidacy. So at this point, we have Mr. Bott as a candidate, and Dr. Taylor is also a candidate. So if there are comments that anyone would like to make on the process, or on the March 3rd discussions, since that one wasn't, I mean, it was an open meeting, and we had members of the public and media there, but there wasn't, it wasn't televised, if there are any additional comments that people want to make, they can do that at this point, and then we will see if we have a vote to appoint. So any additional comments at this point, on either the process or the candidates? Ms. Stone?
I actually thought that's what we were gonna do tonight, so happy to, happy to start off. I do think that because we, because of member schedules, and because that was a morning meeting, it would be good just to review a few of the things that were said at that meeting, and I'm just gonna go over my own, because as one of the two people at the end of that meeting who abstained from declaring a preference, because there was still some thinking I wanted to do about what Brookline needed, what I saw in the two candidates that we were more seriously considering. And I think it's worth going over, don't want to repeat the things that Dr. Jackson so, so put so well in her presentation, but I really thought that all three of our finalist candidates brought impressive, could bring impressive qualifications, and certainly had qualities that I admired. And for Dr. Taylor, for example, brought enormous perspective on Brookline's process and politics and challenges. That perspective was born of his unbelievable experience in processes and politics and school systems, so much more complicated, and facing so much greater challenges than we have, that I really thought that we could learn a lot from what he would bring. And I appreciated his calm, and his kindness, and I thought we could learn a lot from him. So I thought he was a very impressive candidate. John Sills, obviously, brought knowledge of Brookline, of the high school where he taught for so long, and of the superintendency. And Andrew, as Dr. Jackson just outlined, brought this incredible experience of a highly-regarded principal for 14 years in Boston, impressive record at Lincoln in a short time, addressing a lot of the issues that Lincoln was facing when he, when he walked in the building. And I also thought that all three of them, although they all three brought qualities that we needed and wanted, and would have benefited from, all three of them would need key supports from us. And I think, again, Dr. Jackson talked about that. But for me, it was always about weighing the, what do they bring, what kinds of supports would we have to put in place in order for them to be a success as superintendent in Brookline? And I won't go over, because I thought Dr. Jackson did a great job of talking about that. But I think that we go into this, and one of the things we talked about at that morning meeting, was going into this eyes wide open, in terms of the supports that this school committee will have to put in place, to make sure that our next superintendent is a success here. And that means eyes wide open, and willingness to, to spend money, bring people in, just provide those supports. And I think it's important that we say that out loud, because we are gonna do that, and make sure that the superintendent is successful. So the other thing that I was looking at very seriously was what the community had asked for. In all of the responses that we got, in all of the surveys and the focus groups, instructional leadership was, was way up there on the, on the agenda. A vision for Brookline, supporting teachers, reuniting a system that has been struggling with a lot recently, and a great communicator with the community. So again, I was looking at our candidates through the lens of what the community had given us. And ultimately, my focus was on hiring for Brookline's future, which is also what I think this decision is about. And while John Sills, I think, would ably apply his experience, his expertise, to stabilizing Brookline, I was not ultimately, in the long run, persuaded that he had a vision for beyond that. And then when I looked at Andrew, he struck me immediately, I think he struck lots of people this way, from the feedback we got, as a really exciting new leader for Brookline, with all of the qualities that the community had expressed as their highest priorities in the next superintendent. And so yes, as everybody said, he will need support, he'll need mentoring, but he has done nothing in the last 14 years of his career but step up to big challenges and succeed, and hit those, you know, hit the balls out of the park. And I was, I just wanna end on a story. I had the pleasure of sitting next to Bob Spurber at the teen center event not too long ago, and I was talking to Bob about our candidates and this whole process. And Bob Spurber, whom, for those of you who don't know, was a beloved superintendent in Brookline for a long time, and seen as really bringing Brookline into its modern age, of being a really special school system. And I said to him that the concerns with Andrew were that he hadn't been a superintendent, and that he had never been a principal of a high school. And Bob looked at me, and he said, when I became superintendent in Brookline, I was 35 years old, and I had never been a principal of any school. And he said, that's not always all you need. And so I took great courage from that, given what Bob Spurber-- And so, I took great courage from that, given what Bob Spurber brought to Brookline, and I look forward to voting for Andrew and looking forward to seeing him bring the same.
Right. Other thoughts? Ms. Scotto?
I agree with everything that Rebecca has said, so I'm not going to repeat it. I think we had three fine candidates. I think she talked very persuasively about all three of them. We would have been lucky to have any of them as superintendent, but like Rebecca, my choice is Andrew Bott. When this process began, the school committee had a conversation about what we felt we needed in this town at this point in time. And the idea that came to my mind immediately really grows out of the time I spent teaching in Brookline. When I was teaching in Brookline through the 80s and 90s, I retired in 2006, we had a very strong community and a very strong culture here. I happened to work under Carol Schraft, who was a master at establishing community. And I felt that parents and teachers worked together in the best interests of the students. Morale tended to be very high most of the time. Of course, you always go through some ups and downs with morale, depending on what's happened. We did work to rule at one point while I was teaching. But, but this sense of community and culture was important. Louise Thompson was the deputy superintendent here. And I remember participating in a workshop at her house where she talked about culture, school culture, culture in communities, cultures, culture in, you know, any, any kind of organization. And that whole notion of how you establish culture and community, so that people work collaboratively together, and everybody's viewpoint is valued, is one that was really important to me. And I feel like, over the past 10 years, that has really eroded here. The morale has not been as high, people are, people are working collaboratively, but not, not, it's not as much ingrained in our belief system as I think it once was. Parents and teachers, the lines of where parent and teacher interactions take place have been much more defined in a way that I'm not comfortable with. So, I was looking for someone who I felt would be able to address these issues of culture and community, because for me, they were very important. I, I also was looking for someone who's, for whom the student was at the center, someone who really was an instructional leader, but an instructional leader who looked first at the students that he or she was working with. I had the good fortune to escort Andrew Bott around on the day that he visited the schools. And we visited several K-8 schools, Runcle, Pierce, and it was interesting to watch how he interacted with students. He stopped, he talked to them about what they were doing, they talked back to him. He, his, that was what he noticed, what was happening, what students were doing, and what they had to say about it. He had a meeting with high school students, and in that meeting, he talked to them about the high school, their views about the high school, what they would like, what they had issues with. It was such a lively meeting, though he managed to involve those students in a discussion that they were very open, they were very responsive, and he listened to what they had to say. Now, we know what he has done, based on his reputation, but we also have experience with it in Brookline. When he arrived, Lincoln School had had, I think it was six principals in the past, I don't know, six, seven, eight years. And as I understand, three principals. Okay. It was a lot, anyway. There, there were, there were all kinds of issues around morale, around people feeling comfortable and working together. And within about a month, that changed. I mean, people were, at the school, were raving about him. And he tells the story, as you all, I'm sure, have heard by now, of watching students come down the stairs and looking at the chaos, and then noticing who the teachers were sending back up the stairs. The teachers were sending the black boys upstairs. He noticed that happening all over the school, here and there. And that was one of the things he addressed. But he didn't address it by blaming those teachers. He said, "Let's start to look at what's happening here. Who is, who are we focusing on? Who is being, who is being pulled out for, for discipline? Who is actually making the commotion," or whatever you happen to be looking at at the minute? And it, it was a way of getting people to begin to look at children as individuals, and to help them see how they could intervene in ways that would not be seen as focusing on one particular group. So, I heard those stories, I watched him, I looked at what had happened, and what I ended up thinking was, "This is the person we need. This is the person who understands what it means to be an instructional leader, for whom the child is at the center of what we all do, and who understands how to change culture, and how to change climate, and to help all of us, from the school committee right on down, know what needs to be done here, and who will make, I think, visionary changes in the school." His experience is not as extensive as John Sills. There was much to recommend, Dr. Sills, but the qualities that I personally thought we needed here were qualities that Andrew Bott brings. And so, that's why he was my choice for superintendent.
Okay. Further comments? Ms. Chalosky?
Well, I'd like to agree with Ms. Jackson, Ms. Stone, and Ms. Scotto about the quality of the candidates, actually, that we have, that we had as finalists, and also the ones that were to begin with. We really, in this day and age, you're lucky if you get 10 qualified candidates. So, I think that was a good thing, and I think that Ms. Jackson did a good job of shepherding us through the process. It's well-known that I favored John Sills for the superintendency. I was the one vote for him. I felt that his experience as a sitting superintendent, experience in Brookline, and his experience building schools is what the school system needed right now. Since John has withdrawn his candidacy, I will support Andrew Bott. He doesn't have the experience, but certainly has the enthusiasm, intelligence, and Brookline experience. I intend to work with him and support him, and look forward to Mr. Bott being an effective leader of the Brookline Public Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Chalosky.
All right. I'll make one comment as an individual, not as chair. I agree with everything that's been said. The only thing I would add is just, you know, that the superintendency is a strange blend of educational vision and leadership, and also management and operations, and a lot of blocking and tackling and mastery of details. And so, one of the things that I was trying to do is imagine this individual in many different settings. One setting is in a group of principals, leading them to an answer. Another one is a group of parents communicating vision and, and direction. Another was with our various town bodies and agencies who need to work closely with the superintendent, from Town Hall to Advisory Committee to our external partners, Brooklyn Education Foundation, 21st Century Fund. I mean, the number of very, very different rooms that the superintendent sits in, and the purposes that he or she serves is dramatic. And so, it's just, it's amazing that we still consider this one position, but we do. And so, given that we do still consider it one, one position, part of my question was, what can only the superintendent do? And what can be supported and hired for around that individual? And to my mind, what I was just hoping is that the person that we hired had brought the educational vision and lens to all of those different conversations, and understood enough about the management and operations to be able to dig deep when necessary, didn't necessarily have to have done all of it. We do have quite, quite good staff, knew enough about our community partners, didn't have to have done all those jobs, but really brought sort of a, a purpose and direction that, that everything else could draft off of. And even when I thought about our, not in school challenges, when I thought about our, our high school challenges, in terms of capital projects and budgets and everything else, it just became really clear to me that we have a lot of needs in our district right now. We have achievement gaps, we do have a lot of needs, but it just became increasingly clear to me that we weren't going to, you know, technocratically manage our way out of this problem, even though operational experience would be, you know, would be important. But really, we needed some, we need to be, we needed to lead ourselves out of this problem, and we needed to do it with a focus on, on educational, where we wanted the education for the children to go. And that that is something that everything else would then align behind. That's what we would communicate to architects, that's what we communicate to curriculum coordinators, that's what we would communicate to parents and principals, and all the various budgets. You know, that's, that's what we needed, everything else in the budget to align behind. And so, when I thought about that, I was, I was most excited about Andrew as well.
But we had great candidates. Anybody else want to say anything? Beth, do you want to say anything?
Beth, thank you. I don't want to reiterate anything else that, that other folks said. I think that I agree with, with all of those items, and in particular, where other, others of you talked about where the different candidates fight. There's, there's one that I just wanted to emphasize that really was, what really shaped my own thinking on this. As I looked across the, the different elements of the profile that we wanted to see strength, I felt like, in particular, Mr. Sills and Mr. Bott had strength across all of those elements. And so, you know, for me, the calculus was thinking about, what are the places where I really want to see this candidate fight? What is, what are our highest priorities? And just reflecting upon our presentation last week on the achievement gap, and the work that we have to do there, and the fact that that, that every student achieving is our, one of our top strategic priorities, it felt to me like Andrew Bott was the candidate that was sufficiently to be able to work on that for us. And I just wanted to highlight that as, as, you know, one of the most important priorities for us, and, and my enthusiasm about Andrew and his potential to hopefully make transformational change for us on that front.
Good. All right, then, is there, is there any more discussion? All right, do we have a motion? Dr. Jackson?
I move to appoint pending successful negotiation, I suppose, of contract, Andrew Bott for our next superintendent.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Scotto seconded. Any further discussion? All right, we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Cohen, will you pull the committee?
Dr. Jackson? Yes.
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 Yeah.
All right, it's unanimous. We have a new superintendent pending successful contract negotiations. Once again, thank you to our incredible support from so many different community partners who helped us not only develop the leadership profile through 39 focus groups, how many was it? And then, 100 and how many survey responses? 166 survey responses, plus 45 review committee members, and everyone here, all orchestrated by Dr. Jackson, almost invisibly behind the scenes, which is a sign of, of true leadership, that it all just magically happened. I would also say that we couldn't have done it without support from Dr. Connolly, from senior staff, who were very important in this process. Ben Lennis provided a tremendous amount of support. Robin, thank you so much. I can't even imagine what you did, because Lisa knows, but, but we can only guess how much scheduling you did. And really, to all of the principals who hosted and brought around our candidates, as well as our students, Ethan, who participated in our forums with the candidates. And there are just so many people who were part of this process, it was probably upwards of 500, which is a good taste for our superintendent of what it's like to work here. So, it's probably a, a sign of things to come. So, thank you very much, Dr. Jackson, for getting us to a decision. We appreciate it. All right, we are moving on to our next agenda item, which is subcommittee and liaison reports. Ms. Ram, do you have a finance report, or?
Hi, just a brief update for those who were not at the subcommittee meeting on Monday morning. We did do a further review of the budget, digging into several of the issues that we had also talked about last Thursday, but specifically looking at the, the use of reserves, and understanding that, that several of the reserves are no longer needed because of greater precision in budgeting, which, which we very much appreciate and applaud Ms. Dunn for her work on that. And then, you know, while there are other reserves where we feel as though there are, there is some degree of risk and uncertainty that, that still needs to be managed, and so, in our next meeting, we are going to be digging into that issue a bit deeper, and, and trying to understand the, you know, the size of the reserve that we need relative to the, the risks that we have. We also expressed an interest in exploring whether or not devotion, financing costs could be included in the project budget, as has been done for other renovations in the past, as that is having to cover those costs, which over two years is almost $900,000, is, is causing some issues in the operating budget, and not enabling us to, to fund several of the items that we'd like to be able to fund. And then, finally, the last topic we talked about was just ensuring that, that we see, are able to see some of the, more clearly, some of the investments that we are making in the achievement gap, again, related to the, the presentation that was made last Thursday night, and just making sure that we're understanding how those items are showing up in the budget, and if we're investing what we need to in, in them. And we look forward to the, the public hearing on the budget tonight, which unfortunately, I, I will need to watch on, on television, because I need to board a plane now. So, I will say goodbye to you all, and let folks have any other questions.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Ram. And you're, now we don't have to roll call votes anymore. Safe travels. All right. Capital improvements, Mr. Pollak.
So, since our meeting a week ago, there's several things to report on. The capital improvement subcommittee met last Friday morning and took up a number of issues, most of which are very familiar. We started by discussing the continuing search for a site for a ninth school, and the RFQ that is going out to do some specific, a little bit more detailed study on three sites, the Baker School site, the Baldwin School site, and the Stop &amp; Shop site, otherwise known as the Village School site. The RFQ draft was discussed, some, some comments were made, and I can report that a final draft has been developed. I reviewed it, it looks good to me. It's been, was sent out this afternoon to the committee, if anybody else has any comments. But the advertisement was placed in the central register, so that that's rolling, and will be available on Wednesday of next week for architects to look at and respond to. We discussed a couple of other aspects around it that, that encourage staff to, to work with engineering, to identify survey information that we have on the town-owned sites, so that when we hire an architect, the architect can hit the ground running. And we also discussed some of the parallel work that we continue to have on our plate, us, both the schools and, and the town, to stay on schedule for a us, both the schools and the town, to stay on schedule for a public process and site decision in the fall, which include continuing some community meetings, a meeting with the South Brookline community, which we need to schedule, meeting with the Brookline Village Stop &amp; Shop area community, which we need to schedule some additional legal research that we would like to see. Any other comments on that? Okay, yes.
So, in the past, when we've done RFPs and RFQs, there's been some work ahead of time to sort of get a sense of whether, to put the word out that it was coming, so that people would be ready for it and maybe applying. I just wondered whether any of that had been done in the architectural community, if those liked me to.
Well, we can, that's a good thing to note to staff, Mr. Lummis, just about whether there can be any outreach to architects that we'd like to hope they were interested in something with this RFQ coming out. We can make, somebody can make a few phone calls, it'd be a good thing to do. We talked about the, our other major upcoming?
Was that on this?
Yes.
Ms. Chalosky?
That's why I brought it up. So, we'll need to appoint a committee of, there will be a committee of seven. We need three school committee members to be representatives, and I don't remember if we decided that.
We talked about this already.
Yes, we did. We decided that already, okay.
The subcommittee, I think we nominated me, Ms. Chalosky, and Ms. Stone.
Right.
Does that sound good to the school committee? Send us on that task?
Amen.
Voluntold, thank you. Okay, so, expansion of the high school, this incredibly exciting and fabulous project that we have to, you know, just sort of expand our mental bandwidth to be able to do that too on the same schedule, because we really do need to do that. And Dr. Connolly is really taking the lead there and has been working with the headmaster. And in fact, they're, they've set up a, kind of a small leadership committee at the high school. And that committee met this afternoon with Ms. Dickoff and myself to just talk about what it is that we, the school committee, is asking the superintendent and the high school staff to do in the next two months, in a series of between four and six meetings. And the answer to that question is, what we really want is for the educational leaders at the high school to work as a group with their community in focusing on what they, how they would like to teach and deliver education going forward, and the specific ways in which their facilities get in the way of that. With the understanding that we are going to be building additional new facilities that are big enough to house another 800 students, and that at the moment, we don't have a name for that new facility. It's not a second high school, or this department, or that department, or cafeteria, or anything. Because what we really want to do is build the facilities that we don't have today, so that we can teach the way we want to teach tomorrow. And for them to work together to gain an understanding of that challenge and be able to speak back to the whole community, and specifically to the architects that we hire, about what the real opportunity from their point of view will be when we bring this whole question to the public. So, we're not really asking for, you know, answers or choices from them at all right now, but really for a deeper understanding based on all of the work that was done through the visioning process with SMMA over 15 months, to kind of round out that process and create a new starting point for the high school expansion, which we're kind of kicking off this year. So, on that topic, any further comments? Great. We had a brief update on the CIP, and our CIP, the Schools' Capital Improvements Plan, is actually, at this moment, being reviewed downstairs at Advisory's Capital Improvement Subcommittee's meeting, and our deputy superintendent for administration and finance, Mary Ellen Dunn, is there going over that with them. But that, you know, essentially, to recap what we have talked about in our subcommittee and also at school committee, I think, a little bit, is that we want to plan both of these expansion projects, and that with the planned $800,000 that's in the capital improvements plan for 2017, we can allocate monies to each of the two projects for a feasibility study, and that then we can ask town meeting and build into the CIP budget for fiscal 2018, the monies to do schematic design, which would bring us to the point where there isn't enough money in the CIP to build either project, but with schematic design and sites and detailed schematic cost estimates, we would be in a position to then to go to the voters for debt exclusion override to fund capital projects. So, that's the really important parts about the CIP. There's also the detailed stuff of the CIP, that there's money in there to do new heating work at, and mechanical work at both Old Lincoln and Driscoll. And then, there's modest amounts of money for ongoing building maintenance programs like windows and roofs and security, and that's pretty much it.
Excellent.
There's a...
That was it? You didn't mean that was it? You have more things.
No, sorry. No, there's a...
Despite the fact that I wrote a little note to you, which you've studiously...
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Um, okay.
Which you're studiously ignoring.
Thank you. That's my report.
Is there anything else?
Nope. Not a thing.
Is there anything you want to cover? All right. That was...
More tomorrow.
Stay tuned. Stay tuned. I apologize, Mr. Pollak. I've been in upwards of, what, 10, 20 hours of meetings with you this week alone?
Yes.
So, I've heard all this. Are there questions for Mr. Pollak? Are there things that you all are dying to know about our capital processes that you feel...
I can cede him some of my time, like they do in the Senate.
Insufficiently outdated on... Do you want to talk about Parks and Rec? We went to Parks and Rec.
That's what I was thinking.
Right. Okay, well, if you want the rest of my report, that was just the report on the Capital Improvement Subcommittee's meeting on Friday morning. On Monday night, I attended a fascinating meeting of advisory, which has formed a subcommittee on long-range planning. And I will be very brief. There were two parts to advisory's long-range, but long-range planning is really great and really important. And there were two parts to this meeting. The first part, first hour, was spent debriefing Mr. Steve Cirillo, who is the town's finance director and who is retiring. And it was trying to extract from him all of his 25 years of wisdom before he leaves.
In two hours?
One hour.
One hour.
Which they did. And I guess the main chestnut that he had was to advise that we should rethink, as a town, CIP, and not simply see it as a kind of conveyor belt, where things get into out years and then slip into year six, five, four, three, two, one, and then get funded. And that with limited resources, he thought it should be sort of zero based on an annual basis, and we should always be looking hard at what are the most important things that we need now. And that it's fine to have all of those queued up things, but that the way all departments budget is that once they get something into the queue, then they think, well, that's funded, and then they start dreaming up other projects that they want to add to get into the tail end of the queue, and it's just lining up, lining up, lining up. And so, he was saying that a different discipline might be welcome. So, that was interesting. And then, the second half of the meeting was about how do we do long-range planning, given the fact that we have a planning board that doesn't do planning, because that's not the way it's constituted, it basically just does zoning support. And there was a talk about what kind of a committee would we need? If we needed a new committee, or would it be a supercommittee, or members of other committees, or would it be renaming of EDAB? And that was Monday. Tuesday night, most of us attended, by invitation, the hearing, public hearing of the Parks and Recreation Commission to discuss... There was some interesting debate about what the discussion really was about. But the two things that it seemed to be about were, on the one hand, South Brookline sites and the sites that the schools had identified in the ninth school study, being Baker School and Baldwin School, and those were duly discussed. And then, the other topic was really a high-level conversation between Board of Selectmen, which Neil Woschinski came, and the school committee, of which a quorum of us were there, which was, we had posted, and pardon?
Capital Subcommittee.
The Capital Subcommittee of the, of our committee. Right, that's right, and the chair. And to really talk about shared purpose and partnering and shared use, because we are partners on all of our campuses, where Parks and Recreation and the schools work together, whether it's a school property or a park property, there's a lot of partnering. And the public, it was a hearing, the public was there, there was a lot of public comment, there was a lot of public interest and discussion of whether or not there's a place on the golf course to add a school near the denser South Brookline neighborhoods that could work well for walkability, and whether the Parks and Recreation Commission would be supportive of studying that, which they were not yet supportive of studying that as of two nights ago. Other thoughts about that meeting?
I will just say one thing, which is I think that the, in, what I got out of that meeting is that there are two different conversations strategically that we might be having in the town right now. One is where there is, every parcel of open space that currently exists needs to stay exactly in its current form, in which case, there's probably very little room to move, including, in Article 97 or no Article 97, there's probably very little room to move. A different way to think about it is, in Brookline, we value green space, and we want not only no net loss of green space overall, but potentially a little bit of addition would be nice. But frankly, we are flexible and creative about where that green space may be, meaning that if a piece that is currently under the controls of the schools or someone else could get swapped, or purchased, or whatever, and protected, could we take something that's currently protected and have a different purpose for it, if again, we ended up with no net loss and potentially some addition? And if that's the conversation we're having, then it's a very interesting and creative conversation. And I think that's the conversation, I will just speak as an individual, that I would like to have. I think there are some of the commissioners at Parks and Rec who are interested in that conversation. I didn't get the impression that they all were. I got the impression that maybe they needed some more processing time. I got the impression there are many people in the community who are pretty interested in that conversation. Although I do think that if you only said, what did they say at that meeting, where did they end up? They ended up where, Mr. Pollak said they ended up, and that was reported in the Globe. And I think that that moment in time might be, well, not might be, is very disappointing to a large, large number of people in South Brookline, who were hoping, I think, for a more creative and expansive conversation. So, I don't think anything is done. There were no decisions, there were no, you know, votes, hell no kind of votes. But I think just a question of what does that broader, more expansive, creative conversation look like? And if there were a conversation that was more creative, what would that look like? Because we don't only, you know, the needs are not limited to the ones that we are talking about in this one particular site study. We have a long-term need for space. So, some of the things we need to keep our foot on the gas pedal on and keep proceeding as quickly as possible, but there might be other things that have longer timeframes. So, anyway, we should just be mindful of the long and short of both of those. What else? Anything else?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Curriculum, Susan, let me just say one sentence.
That's it. Part of the difficulty with that meeting for many of us is that it was full of yes-buts. So, it was very difficult to know whether people were at all open to change when they would say, yes, that's a wonderful idea, but... So, I think we have a lot of work to do.
Okay, Ellen.
I will be very brief. Next week, Tuesday, at 4:30, note the different time, we will be having the Lincoln School Improvement Plan and the Baker School Improvement Plan, as before our workshop and before the principal candidates come. The new principals for the Lawrence and Pierce, thank you. We have our regularly scheduled meeting on March 31st of the Curriculum Subcommittee in the morning, 8:30 to 10:00. And then, I want to reiterate, because I think it's somewhat curriculum, the movie that's going to be shown at the high school, Most Likely to Succeed, I don't know if people remember this or not, it's on the March 29th at 7:00 PM at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Government relations?
Madam Chair, I have nothing for government relations, but I can sort of, on the edges of government relations, I give an update that I want to thank Mr. Lummis for all the work that he's done. We now have a section, a separate page on the school committee web page that is a negotiations update. So, for those members of the public who have been asking for information to come out of the school committee about our schedule, about when we meet, about the status of negotiations, to the extent that we can provide information there that doesn't violate our executive session rules, we will. And again, that is live now. I think it's going to go through a beta testing, and we're going to adjust it a little bit. But there's some really good information there also about the information that we've provided to PTO leaders and others about the hiring, use of override funds, and the staff that has been hired with that override, with those override funds, and the staff that is projected to be hired in the proposed FY '17 budget. So, again, another piece of the negotiations that's been talked about a lot in the public. There's now some actual information on the website for people to look at. So, I urge everybody to take a look and give us suggestions for how it can be made more user-friendly. Thank you.
Good. And the only other government relations update is that there was a Metco on the Hill Day earlier this week, I think it was Tuesday. There was a Metco March for Equity, and apparently it was very well-attended, which is terrific. And there is a change.org petition out there about essentially restoring Metco funding. So, there, if anyone is interested, or sort of, the fund, to promote Metco funding. So, if people are interested in signing that petition, that they should, I'm sure if you Google it, you can find it. But anyway, or you can email me, and I'll send it to you. Any other government relations? Okay, policy, Dr. Jackson?
The policy subcommittee met this morning from 8:30 to 10:00 and discussed two topics. One was the revisiting of the restraint policy, which we approved as an interim in December. And as we had shared with the school committee, we wanted a chance to do a more comprehensive review on a couple of specific issues related to that, which we did this morning, and are looking forward to bringing to the school committee at our next meeting, April 14th, posting publicly shortly for comment, a revised, a slightly revised version of the restraint policy that fundamentally prohibits prone restraints. That is the quality of the change, the nature of the change. Otherwise, it is the same policy that was approved as an interim in the fall. The other thing we began under new business was a conversation regarding a review of our policies that broadly fit in the category of discriminatory harassment, including bullying, Title IX, Title VI, and various other federal laws around supporting students in the face of actions either from adults or other students related to discrimination and/or harassment. And so, based on feedback from legal counsel, we are doing a review of existing policies and making sure that those are up-to-date and as comprehensive as they should be. And our next meeting is April 14th. Did I leave anything out? As I'm running on fumes?
I think the, the other thing we decided was that currently, a number of the, a number of the policies that are in the manual that speak to harassment and discrimination and bullying are in separate sections of the policy manual, and so, it's not easy for somebody who is looking for the policy on X, having to do with a case on how to pursue it, knows where to go. So, we are also, thanks to our staff work, Ms. Coyne and others, going to look at creating a, a new section of the policy manual that would bring all of those pieces together and make them much more easy to find and make sure that people understand what the procedures are as well.
No, but thank you, that was important. The other thing that we discussed, both in the context of the restraint policy and also in the context of these other policies to be revised, was our relationship with the Brookline Police Department. And it has become a topic of public conversation, given recent activities with the police department, but is also important as we revise our policies to make sure that our working relationship with the department is kept up-to-date relative to those policies, including discipline, restraint, public safety more broadly, et cetera. So, we will be looking at that relationship as we look at these policies to make sure that everybody is working well together on these issues, so.
Great. Okay. Any other liaisons or updates? Mr. Glover?
Yesterday, I attended the Steps to Success Board Meeting, quarterly board meeting. It was a very good and wide-ranging discussion. Recently, the, the organization received, received official confirmation of its 501(c)(3) status, which they've been working for, for a long time, and they, I mentioned this before, but previously, they had a 501(c)(3) sponsor that allowed donations to be tax-exempt. They no longer need that sponsor as a result of receiving their 501(c)(3) status. And in addition to that, they've become eligible to apply for and receive certain grants that they were previously prohibited from, from doing it due to their lack of, of status. So, that's, that's a positive development. There was a decent amount of time spent talking about a recent class proposal that Steps made. It was for a pilot program at the, at the high school intended to provide low-income students with sort of non, not necessarily academic skills, but sort of skill-building tools and techniques and skills that would allow them to be more successful in college and beyond. The sort of things that in middle and upper-class households, people tend to get through their, their home environment, but don't necessarily get in a low-income environment. And there was a lot of talk about it because the, the Academic Standards Committee rejected the request and won't allow that to go forward. So, there's, there's a good bit of discussion as to how it should be retooled to be represented to the Academic Standards Committee next year, and I think the staff at Steps is working with the headmaster in order to, to sort of see if there's anything that can be done in that, in that regard. And the last thing that I'll mention, and I think I've mentioned this to some of you before, if not all of you, but it came up again yesterday, not for me, but from others, there continues to be concern about summer school tuition for Steps to Success students and all low-income students, and whether there's any way that we, as a committee, can find money within our budget to waive summer school tuition for students who really can't afford it. It's $300 a class, and it's, it's very prohibitive for low-income students to be able to take summer school courses without a waiver. And there, as I understand it, and I could be wrong, there's been some money available in the past, but not enough money to, to meet the need of all the students who either need or want to take summer school courses.
So, I was reminded of something that I read recently about a study that had been done of the increase in college application and acceptance for low-income students for whom the extra charges of applying to college were waived. And in not applying to college, but having your scores and everything sent to the colleges, I think what was waived was the, whatever the college board charges to send scores. And, and I wondered, I remember when, when I read that, I wondered whether Steps or, or I don't know whether any staff is here to, whether Steps had ever, did that for its, for its kids, just because it's so focused on that, on the college process? Do we do anything to?
It's a good question, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
If they may, with their funds, I'm not sure. It sounds like something that I wouldn't be surprised if they do, but I don't.
I wouldn't be surprised either. I thought it might be a good conversation for us through you, our liaison to them, to have with Steps about, about what we do in terms of covering the increasingly high costs of sending scores. I think you're allowed to send your scores for the, for the fee of taking the test, you get to send your score to two or three colleges, I think. But then every additional college is, is another, there's a price to pay, and it's 25 or 30 or even more than that dollars to have your scores sent. And so, I thought it would be a good conversation to have with them and, and for us to have about what we might be able to do for our low-income students in terms of getting those fees covered, so.
Dr. Jackson?
One other thing that comes to mind as you talk about summer school cost, is that in many communities where I've worked with community foundations, this is the kind of thing that community foundations tend to support through local donor contributions. And so, now that they're standing 501(c)(3), and I don't know if this prohibited them in the past, but I wonder whether they couldn't engage the Brookline Community Foundation around this conversation as well? Not to excuse us from looking at our budget, we certainly should, but I would think they could be a partner, particularly now if they can apply for grants in ways that they couldn't before, maybe.
Good.
Yeah, I would actually agree with that, and I think as many of you probably remember, unfortunately, our summer, summer school budget has been in deficit for a number of years. And so, that's the reason that, that we've had this problem, we've had to subsidize it as it is, and I think that's, that's part of the problem. But I think your idea is a great idea.
Yeah, I, I would like to, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I mean, I do think it, it would be helpful for us, I think, I think these are great ideas to, to look at, but I think we, we probably should spend some time trying to cost it out.
Mm-hmm.
And understand what we're.
Absolutely. And maybe we need to support it more. Maybe we just have to decide, this is what our subsidy will be for it, and, you know, I think up until now, we've tried to make it self-paying, and maybe that's not the possibility. But I had one other thought about the class, and I don't know if this is something for you to suggest or not, but in thinking about it, if it were like a seminar after school, maybe once a week or something like that, as some of the other seminars, then it's, it's different, it's, you know, you may not take it for a grade, but as a pass/fail or something like that, that might be another way to, to think about that sort of class. And I think it could be just as effective, if not more, so.
Yeah, I know, and that, and that is something that was talked about.
Oh, great.
The schedule, whether it be after school, whether it be Z Block, or some other timing that doesn't encroach upon the remainder of the school.
Right. Right.
To that point, because I think what you're quickly going to run into are the barriers for these students around after school and before school, that are based on their experience in terms of income. And I would just, as they think about how to submit, again, framing what they're talking about in the context of 21st century skills, and that part of what we have at the high school, as I've been looking at it for my own son, who's now looking at these kinds of classes, is our classes that are around career, and 21st century skills that are connected to what it sounds like they're talking about, which are social-emotional skills, ability to communicate, ability to, you know, speak publicly, et cetera, et cetera, you know, problem-solving, creative thinking are all things that I think we seek to prepare our students to be able to do, whether it's in college and/or in work. And so, there may be some framing out there that could be useful to them, that would resonate with what the high school offers in the way of career classes, and that is a complement to the sort of academic rigor, plus the social-emotional skills that is, you know, Ms. Charlefsky might remember from our recent meeting, is, is getting a lot of attention because it's clear that without that combination, students are not going to be successful when they leave high school. So, and I'd be happy to share some of what I've been reading about and learning about in that context, if it's useful.
Maybe Dr. Fisher-Mueller might want to weigh in on this, too?
Yes, thank you very much. Please know that the curriculum has been worked on for a couple of years, and it's actually outstanding, and it speaks to what you're describing. I want to check in about what you're talking about of the fee, I'm not sure about that. And then around the course, actually, excuse me for jumping around here. What I know is that the curriculum is valued, it's being discussed, the headmaster and her team are talking with the executive director and Dan Arroyo, one of the advisors, and that team. So, it is a priority. They are looking at the credit that they're giving to all the other courses collectively of this style, talking about tutorial. So, I apologize, I was at the Minority Student Achievement Network conference, I was unable to be at that board meeting. It sounds like the whole collective information was not available. Oh, summer courses. That, there's some conflicting information around that as well, it is shared, that students are not being given that waiver, so I need to check on that.
Okay.
Of all three of those.
Yeah, and I, I am likely short on information, I'm reporting back.
Well, thank you for asking, Ms. Charlefsky.
The extent we can get clarification on that, that would be.
Wait, Dr. Fisher-Mueller, don't go away, because I don't suppose you have any interest in giving us a one-minute summary of MCN, like 18-minute Shakespeare. I'm sorry, were you done?
Very invigorating.
Okay, okay.
Invigorating, provocative.
Sorry, for everyone who doesn't know, MCN is the Minority Student Achievement Network, it's something that Brookline's been part of for a very long time, and, and so, just want to clarify, I shouldn't be using acronyms either.
So, it was a meeting at Shaker Heights in Ohio, and it was very exciting, very provocative. And I will tell you that they have a lot of really wonderful things going on there for, for kids, and as great as all that is, they stand up and they say, we have the achievement gaps, just like the rest of you, members of the Minority Student Achievement Network, and we are not closing them. There are things for us to figure out that we haven't collectively.
So, maybe when Dr. Conley's back, when all of you are in the same room, which is not, I know has not happened in a little while, you all can figure out how to give us some, I guess what I'm most interested in, I don't buy anybody else, just a substantive update, like what were the things that were not just discussed, but that seemed to be getting any traction? So, I don't.
Same as ours.
Same as ours.
They have, they have the African-American-Latino Scholars Program that is similar, they have stretched that down to the younger grades, like we are with younger, young scholars. They, they do small programming that actually doesn't even come close to Steps to Success here in Brookline. They have, their, their demographic is a bit different in that we're about 9% African-American, they're about 25%, and their socio-economic breakdown is different as well. They have more in the middle than we do. But, but programmatically, what we sit there and talk about is that we have to get in the classrooms. It's about the instruction, it's about the learning that goes on the classrooms, and we all know we can't program our way out.
Thank you.
Now, now we're going to start asking, would you mind? Do you mind?
Would you mind?
I'm just trying to be brief.
No, 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 I know, but then I'm the worst violator, so.
No, but I'm curious, so, besides Shaker Heights and us, who else was at the conference? Was it everybody from the group?
Yeah, I believe there are like 23 members now, and I'd be happy to get the.
It's grown, no, that's okay, it doesn't have to be exact. I mean, I remember that most of them are college towns across the United States, basically, Ann Arbor, Madison, Berkeley, et cetera. But was there anything else that was said there that, that sort of struck you, or that, you know?
Well, one thing that did strike me was the work that they are doing in their instrumental programs and performing arts.
They being Shaker?
Heights, yes. And a program that they have for very young children, and they, they performed with high school kids, and I actually taped it, and I'd be happy to share it with you. But they start these kids with cereal boxes on their shoulders, and, yeah, it was quite impressive, outstanding, yeah, absolutely. And it speaks to, to the challenges that communities like ours, like Shaker Heights has, that is different from a more homogeneous community that is able to really direct solely resources and have the classroom actually be a particular way for all the students in that classroom, and that's the challenge that we have. We have a much more diverse and greater churn of English language learners. So, inasmuch as we are like Shaker Heights, Brookline continues to be quite unique in our student population and over time, what that looks like. Since we talked about it most recently, and I appreciate the quote, or I'm going to borrow it as a quote from you, that we can't program our way out of the achievement gap, did you hear anything interesting about either professional development for teachers and staff, or recruiting practices, or any of that other stuff we've been talking about in terms of ideas out there? Or? Yes, thank you. Their recruiting practices, they're, they're still in the works, but they are quite extraordinary. They're talking about housing allowances. They are, they are partnering with colleges like we are, but their, their actual financial support and then the, the cohorts of teachers of colors that they bring in that then remain a cohort is much stronger, and they, they have a very high percentage of administrators of color. And it became quite a joke, but Shaker Heights graduates come back to Shaker Heights at levels, at the administrative level, that doesn't even, we don't come close to. We do come close in terms of Brookline High teachers, but, yeah, their, their administration is quite impressive. So, that was one that really resonated in particular.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher-Mueller. An unscheduled liaison update, but a great one. Any more liaisons? Ms. Gatta?
Monday night, I was at the Brookline Education Foundation meeting, and they often start their meeting with one of their grant recipients, and this, this month, they started with Liz Crane, who was a biology teacher at Brookline High School. And she talked about the fact that they had, they had a grant where all of the BHS biology teachers went to the National Science Teachers, I can't think of what it's called, but, the, the conference that the National Science Teachers Association held in Providence. And she said they got many, many new ideas, they had a chance to participate together as opposed to just one or two teachers going. The whole staff went. So, the conversation about what they had seen started at the conference and continues now back at the high school, but she said it was really a wonderful experience, not only to go, but to share this with the other teachers. She talked about a dog genetic lab where they looked at the dog's genomes and sequencing and, and were making judgments about, about that kind of thing, somebody doing a bubbles experiment where they, they were blowing bubbles and they were looking at the size and the lifespan, and were thinking about that in relation to species. It was, she was very excited and made it, made it seem as if it was a fascinating and professionally-rich conference, which continues because the entire group of teachers was allowed to attend. The meeting then continued with a report about the spelling bee, which was held last Sunday and was well-attended, and.
They didn't care about it.
Yeah, it was.
The fifth grade spelling bee.
Oh, it's just, it's, it's, they're not doing the adult spelling bee at this point, but the fifth grade spelling bee, there were somewhere in the 25 to 30 number of kids who participated in it, it seems to me, and was very excited. Most of the talk, of course, was about the gala and auction that is taking place and some of the fabulous auction, auction items that are available, including things like a villa in France, ski, cottage, all kinds of stuff, bring your checkbook if you, if you come and if you're interested in, in supporting that. They also were very excited because they have just gotten the first, first copy, and it's a, it's what we call ARC, an Advanced Reader Copy in publishing, but of the Caverly Awards Speeches book, they are. Copy in publishing, but of the Caverly Award Speeches book. They are producing a book that is a selection of the speeches over the years of the Caverly Award winners. And that will be available for purchase at the gala, as well as in the Booksmith. It's not quite ready yet. So, there, there it is.
Thank you, Ms. Gatto. Mr. Chang?
I will be brief. I was at the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations last night, and I was asked to provide a update on the superintendent search. I put together a overview of the processes since the twenty-nine candidates that applied as eloquently as the presentation that Ms. Dr. Jackson just gave. But it was well-received, I thought. I thought everybody felt the level of community involvement was extremely impressive. The online surveys, the different members of community, parents, students, town meeting members, teachers, just the diversity and the breadth of people who participated in the process, especially in the finalists' interviews. I thought everybody thought that was very, very impressive. So I, I think that was well-received last night. And finally, just a quick update from last month's CPAC meeting. It was a very well-attended information session for the Extended School Year Program. I have some information here that I could pass around. Obviously, a lot of new parents and first-time having kids with IEP, they want to make sure they understand some of the logistics around the Extended School Year Program. And in addition to that, the Recreation Department also presented its camp guide for 2016, which allows students with, within the Extended School Year, because it's really been the morning, to join their program in the afternoon. And they talked quite a bit about the logistics of actually doing that. So it was actually quite interesting. So. And by the way, CPAC will be putting up their Twitter and Facebook account soon.
Facebook's up.
Oh, okay.
All right. Any other liaisons?
So, I have, this isn't really a liaison. I mean, we're sort of stretching it a bit, but I wanted people to, to know. As many of you know, Gloria Rudish was our physician for the schools for thirty years. I think she left maybe three or four years ago, something like that. And her husband, Marvin Minsky, passed away about a month ago. The reason I bring it up is I think that we should, I, I happen to go today to his memorial service at MIT. And he was truly an extraordinary man, and I just wanted to say a few words. One, because Gloria had been here so long and had given so much, and I knew so little. I knew some of the stuff about him, but it was truly an amazing event. For those of you who don't know, Marvin Minsky was a professor at MIT, but more importantly, he was one of the founders of artificial intelligence, has innumerable things that he's invented. People were speaking of him there, like, it was truly amazing. And these are people who are, you know, at the top of their field in the same areas. So, and he, they lived here in Brookline all their lives. The kids went here to the schools. And I just thought, you know, it would be nice to at least acknowledge it today for all of you. I know many of you don't know Gloria, unfortunately, but I did, and I do. And so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further liaisons or updates, then we will move on to public comment. I apologize, we are forty-five minutes late. Is there anyone here signed up for public comment? All right, Mary Duer?
So on the climate. Challenging subject, but something.
So wait until you're at the microphone to speak, if that's okay? Just, yeah, give us these, we'll hand them out. I just want to make sure everybody can hear you at home.
Sure.
Okay? Well, we have extra paper, so that's okay.
Thank you. So Brookline Climate Week is coming, March twenty-eighth through April third. And this is really an important document, and I hope you'll all open it up and take a look at the offerings this year. It's really a testament to the sense of hope that we bring in the face of climate change, the sense of, that Eric Erickson talked about, bringing hope, that hope had to be taught, and that some children will learn it and some will not. And this is a document about hope and about a call to action around some, you know, potential catastrophic implications of climate change. So we at the local level, Climate Action Brookline, has a steering committee for Climate Week. And my colleagues couldn't be here tonight, David Pantalone, Michael Berger, and Pat Marr, who serves on the Public Health Advisory Committee with Alan Balsam. And we have a number of events for kids and families, which I'd like to point out. There's an important event at Pierce School on Saturday, April second, the Youth Climate Adaptation Science Fair, organized by Crystal Johnson, a Pierce parent. She just decided this is something she wanted to do for her son, and to show her son that she really cared about his future. And she has arranged for over sixty applicants, all stepping up and creating an invention or a concept for climate change. We have judges and prizes, and I hope you'll all stop by and see what the youth of Brookline are coming up with. Also, the same day is the Three R Depot. The Three R Depot is, this is our fourth, this is our sixth Climate Week, but it's our fourth Three R Depot. And the Three R Depot is a great family event, opportunities for kids. There's, particular interest is that the Mothers Out Front Brookline Group have organized a scavenger hunt and an understanding of the three, over three hundred and fifty-one gas leaks that occur in Brookline. There are over three hundred and fifty-one gas leaks in a range from high to mid to low and sense of extreme. And right now, there's a bill before the State House that's hoping to encourage the, I'm not the election, the Natural Gas Company to address the problems of these leaks. There is no mandate, there is no legal mandate right now for them to address these leaks. And it's a source of huge methane expiration. So I'm, those are important events, and I hope that also you'll take a look at one particular event I'd like to point out, Local Action Big Results, because this is not just about Brookline. Climate Week originated in Brookline, but we're appealing to all, to build the climate movement across the region. So we've invited a lot of people from Mass Climate Action Network. It's a, they're forty, Climate Action Brookline is a chapter of Mass Climate Action Network. And there are three topics that Brookline is addressing or needs to address, in our opinion. And one of them is something that town meeting passed by an overwhelming, unanimous vote for community choice aggregation, for the selectmen to look at community choice aggregation, to address the gas leaks, and also promoting, we're really interested in taking a look at smart growth. And this is something that applies to your deliberations on locating the ninth school and other schools that are coming in the pipeline because of over-enrollment. So we invite you, the school committee, or some of you, as you did come to the Park and Open Space Committee meeting, hearing, to come to this event and be part of the discussion, and learn from someone like Andre LaRue, who is the executive director for the Massachusetts Smart Growth Alliance. We won't be talking solely about school expansion and development, but it's a concept that I hope, and a language that we would love for you to join in and be part of the conversation. So these are some of the important events. And then finally, ending with a critical event, with Michael Ducacus at the end of the week, where he's going to be talking about what voters need to know our climate in the elections of 2016. And we're hoping that Ed Markey is going to join Michael. And this is crucial, because the decisions that we are making now in local policy, in state policy, and, and national policy, and the personal actions that we are taking as individuals will have implications for years to come.
Good. Thank you very much, Mary. We don't comment during public comment, but I will say that as a parent, I received over Blackboard, Connect Ed, the entire schedule of climate action events, which we don't really ever do for outside organizations, as far as I know. But at any rate.
Yes. And I meant to mention that there is a website, www.brooklineclimateweek.org, in which you can get updates and find all the information you need to know, as well as images of some of the art installations that are around town. I don't know if you've seen them at Brookline Bank. Carrying capacity of the earth is the question asked there. And there are other installations, including down, down in Town Hall, about the natural world and our attempts to contain it and control it, and the implications around ecosystems and the living planet systems that we need to survive.
Thank you. Julia Lanham?
Thank you for letting me have some time. So my name's Julia Lanham. I'm a parent at Baker School. I have two children who are in third and the fifth grade. And I am the chair of the Baker Site Council. And I was part of the finalist review committee for the superintendent search. So I just felt like it would be important to come at the end, to hear the vote, and then also give my opinion. And I, I'll be honest, when I came and I realized that the comments were going to be after the vote, I was kind of frustrated. But actually, it was helpful to me to sit here and listen for this whole time and hear before I spoke. So I just wanted to give you some feedback from my perspective, and it's not just my perspective, but I wanted to just give it to you, and I'll keep it brief. I know we're all tired. I need to get home with our kids. But one of the things I heard from you tonight was that you're really looking, you're excited about Andrew Bott because he's bringing transformational change. Like, who doesn't want that, right? The fact that we all want that right now is so exciting. So what I want to challenge you all to is that there's, like, we have to do our part in transformational change. It's not just up to the candidate that you, that we've hired, that we've agreed upon. So for example, in this process, so much of it looked good, that people feel really good about. But when you brought in, when you hired the consultant company to bring in the pool of candidates, they're a white company. Those optics matter. If you say you want diverse candidates and you hire a company that's only white, they're not gonna, it's not gonna have the same perspective if you're gonna have a, a company that's gonna have people of color in it, that's gonna have different and diverse backgrounds. And if you didn't get them in the first time, then you might have to, I recommend that you push it back and, and wait and go and recruit, recruit firms that would be, that have people of color or, or diversity in other ways. Same thing with the candidates. So you gave three candidates, and you said that they were all good, and you all said that. But those of you who spoke really stood behind those three candidates. But what I noticed, and what I want you to hear, is that from the second those three candidates were released, Dr. Taylor caused a lot of controversy in Brookline. And whether you can say that, acknowledge that publicly or not, he did, both from being fired twice, I don't know if it's also because he's a person of color. He's a lovely man. I got to spend a lot of time with him, and I loved all three candidates as, on a personal level. But there was nobody that I've talked to, not one person off the record, that said that he was equal in, in as far as being qualified for this position, for Brookline, not as a superintendent, but just because of his experience for this community at this time. And I think by standing behind him and saying he's equal, we had three great candidates, but then you talk only about the two candidates, the two white men. At the end, they were the finalists. Like, that, the optics do matter. And so I think if you wanted a, somebody of color, somebody who was more diverse, maybe even a woman, that you didn't get it in the first round, I would definitely recommend for transformational change, sometimes you have to give up efficiency, and you have to put it out there again, and you have to wait for good candidates. I, I think Andrew Bott could be wonderful. I think that we're all gonna get around him and, you know, support him, and we're gonna hopefully help him to succeed. And I hope you will all support him in transformational change. But it's uncomfortable. Like, that level of change is uncomfortable, and I will wrap it up. It's uncomfortable, and it's going to require us to do things differently. I would also like that if, in a vote like this in the future, everybody says something, like, "The men were silent here, and I don't know what you were thinking." And, and that was an interesting perspective. Just, I would have liked to hear all of you say what you felt about this. And maybe you did at other meetings, but this was the one where the decision was being made officially. I, I really just, I can't say enough about our kids. And if we want to make a difference for kids, the achievement gap, I think it's gonna come from all of us with privilege, whether it's white privilege or privilege of sitting in these seats, and privilege as parents. And, and we're gonna have to do it differently. And I didn't feel like that was done here. And I don't think that I'm the only voice saying that, but I wanted to be a white voice saying that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing as there are no other members of the public in the audience, I won't ask if anyone else wishes to make public comment. Thank you both for coming. We have our student report. I apologize, Mr. Khan, that we are running so far behind, but it's been a rich discussion so far. So we are excited to hear your report.
Thank you. Sorry, the weather's getting nicer, so the pollen's coming out. And so, our transition time at Brookline High School, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are all selecting their courses for the next school year. And selection has happened earlier this year than in the past, because that way the school can better anticipate the needs for teacher placement and which courses to offer. And seniors are not planning for courses next year, but they're planning for what comes next. Students not planning, not attending college can utilize the career planner, while college-bound seniors on this month are waiting for the majority of college decisions to come in, which is exciting and stressful. And although many students are thinking about what comes next, many students are also still committed to making Brookline High School better and the community that we live in better now. And this was represented in several ways recently. Last week, the Amnesty International Organization at Brookline High School hosted a day corresponding with International Women's Day. And they hosted half a dozen speakers throughout the day who talked about women in education, sex ed, women's treatment in other parts of the world, women in government, and a wide variety of topics. And they were able to engage a large portion of the school. And in a, in a similar manner, the next month, the Gay Transgender Alliance will host its annual Day of Dialogue, which comes before the National Day of Silence. And on this day, many students will share personal stories, and it also about queer identity. And we also try and represent the multifaceted experiences of being queer. And it's a powerful day, and it's important to educate the student body. Even in Brookline, which is ostensibly very supportive of queer students, and I think it is very supportive in a lot of ways, being queer can still be hard. And therefore, this day continues to be important to make more students feel represented and like they have a space where they're seen and a place where they're heard. And it creates dialogue, which hopefully makes the school a safer and more comfortable space for the rest of the year and the years to come. And I'm looking forward to it. And then finally, today was the Second Annual Asking for Courage Day at the high school, which is focused on race. And I've been to a lot of assembly days in my four years at the high school, and I thought that this was one of the most relevant, most powerful, and most well-executed days yet. It was five assemblies and X block activity. And it was, was full of assemblies covering a wide variety of identities and topics. And a lot of faculty and administrators helped shape the day, which they felt like it was truly run by the students as well, because assemblies were introduced by the students, and they were full of students. And the auditorium itself was completely packed. I don't know if you've ever seen the auditorium with people sitting on the floors, but it's pretty incredible. And there was a large panel of students for each assembly, and they shared personal experiences, answered questions, and explained ideas and movements. And there was a lot of question and answers that went back and forth in conversations in the hallway, in the cafeteria. And I personally heard stories and experiences of people I've gone to school with for the past four years that I've never heard before. And like every year that we have this assembly, now, when I go back to school and back into the community, I'll be able to think differently and know more perspectives and more respectfully, more knowledgeably engage with everyone. And I won't summarize all the speakers. I think this day was videotaped, and I encourage you all to watch it. I can help locate the video. I'm not.
Please do.
Will you send us the link?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure who videotaped it, but I definitely saw a video camera in the front. I can ask around, and, yeah. And, but there was a few takeaways that I wanted to share. And the first was that teachers make a huge difference. I heard stories about amazing teachers who make positive impacts in the lives of students every day. I also heard stories of teachers who need more education before they can have the same positive impact. And the second thing I heard highlighted was peers, because peers came up in more stories than any other, and the pressures associated with peers. And peers can help promote pride and provide comfort and humor and all sorts of positive things. And then there's also many negative effects that peers can have. And there are And then there's also many negative effects that peers can have, and there are things mentioned, like the hate speech from the Kuhu incident, which I'm sure you're all vaguely aware of. And, and but then there's also much more mentions about the things that are more subtle, but still insensitive and can accumulate over time to be degraded, and I kept on thinking about how we can shape the schools to help stop these toxic comments, and I repeatedly heard many of the stories allude back to elementary school, which made me think a lot. And I don't know so much about the elementary school curriculum, it's been a while since I was there, but I know that when I was younger, I'm, I said...